Trey, thanks so much for joining me today.
We're the ferns. I thought this was between two ferns.
Well, we do have a cactus.
Oh.
Between the cactus and the tree.
I guess it works.
Yeah, well, thanks for joining me on Burger and Birds.
Yeah, man.
Drinking some fighting cock today. I really like this stuff. It's got a very ugly label. For what's inside, I think this is from Heaven Hill. It's a decent bourbon.
Are we allowed to drink that right now? I mean, I am. I don't know if you are.
I'll do whatever I want.
You crossed, crossed, crossing the picket lines, man.
This bottle was bought before. You can see it's been well enjoyed at this point. You bring that up. It's kind of an interesting piece happening right now. I saw Charles Booker put out a statement in favor of, Heaven Hill will do the right thing. So in favor of the unions there, which, you know, no surprise. Democrat telling, you know, union folks that I've got your back. But really, outside of that, I've not heard, you know, I'm not heard a ton on what's going on over at Heaven Hill these days.
I've seen some tweets from like the, you know, Kentucky 120 now AFT people, just kind of union solidarity stuff. But yeah, I mean, I've only seen it in the Democrat Twitterverse.
Right, right. And it's, you know, I've got, you know, I've got friends who are in unions. It's interesting to catch up with them now because of how small the union space has grown or shrunk in the last 10 years.
Oh, and it's interesting because, you know, they're, I think Trump, especially in the, with his form of populism and the shift of the Democratic Party away from, you know, anything even resembling even moderate social, position on social issues. You know, Trump bought a lot of those people in the party. I think unions are in a weird spot because the union leadership may still be Democratic, but man, a lot of their membership ain't.
It is fascinating. You know, you bring up a really interesting point. I was talking to a Republican, sort of in the Trump vein, turned independent in this 51st House district. He's running for state house for Ben Carney season. And didn't get the Republican nomination. He's running as an independent and said, you know, I don't want to be beholden to a party, but our place in Adair and Taylor County is, you know, very rural or very worker centric and I'm for the, I'm for the workers. I'm for the small man, small business minded folks. And it's interesting that, you know, the political spectrum used to be, that would be Democrats.
Yeah.
Bread and butter.
Yeah, you just, you've seen this, this wave of populism move into the Republican Party and it's, you know, that's, the Democrat Party had a lot of their own internal feuds going on, but that's, eventually that's going to be the big feud inside the Republican Party is going to be the traditional, the traditional conservatives, free market, international trade. You know, that, that vein of Republican versus this strain of populism that's come in with, with Trump. You know, I think it's good for the party. It's, it's, you know, at least it's a policy discussion, better than other fights that we're having. But, but it's, you know, it's, it's going to be interesting to see how that one plays out.
So on that point, and I wanted to catch up with you on, on the special session and the three day session ended last week. It does seem like Republicans have a point in time here where, you know, they can get things done in Kentucky, but it's Republicans that are holding up the agenda and trying to figure out what a Kentucky Republican looks like these days where Trump is still very popular. But, you know, you sort of have these really outside ideologies that are, that are inside Republican Party. What, what did you make of this special session? And, you know, did you see Republicans able to do sort of what they needed to do and wanted to do? Or were they sort of hamstrung by some of the others in the party?
I think they were able to overcome a lot of the kind of gnashing of teeth people who are making mistakes or on the wings. You know, if you actually watched the session, not follow the news and not even really watch the floor debates, because the floor debates are, you know, when it comes to the floor, it's fait accompli. The bill's done. It's not changing. It's not being amended. It's, and it's passing.
Yeah, they're for show.
Yeah. And so, you know, the real, if you want to watch it, the real nuts and bolts and, and the discussions are in committee. And I thought, you know, outside of, with the exception of a couple of spots, Danny Bentley with some odd comments about vaccines, Adrian Southworth, and a couple of instances with a couple of other House members. Throw out maybe four or five House members and then the one state senator, I thought, not only were the discussions good, they were, they were bipartisan. I felt like there were Democrats and Republicans on both sides of discussions that were being had. And I think the bills that passed were largely what they came in wanting to do. You know, I think they, there was some gnashing of teeth certainly, I think made behind the scenes on some news that were, that were pulled, that were purely political stunts. But, you know, policy wise, it didn't affect what they were, what they were trying to do.
It's interesting though, Trey, you know, watching some of these committee meetings and granted, I wasn't able to watch as many as I would have liked to, but specifically I was watching more on the Senate side. And you had people like Dr. Senator Ralph Alvarado, who, you know, to Stiversville, this was, I think, SB 2. Could be mistaken on that one, but essentially said, hey, this bill doesn't do as much as I would have liked it to have done. And, you know, we had an opportunity here to be bold. We had an opportunity to enact something pretty large. And, you know, while, you know, while this doesn't accomplish that, I'm still going to vote for it, is essentially what he's saying. So, you know, better than nothing, I think was the quote from him and then several others in committee on some of the, some of the bills coming through. But, you know, like, does that, does that make it, make a difference? Do people, at the end of the day, see that, you know, Republicans passed legislation? Or did anybody pay attention to what?
Well, first of all, I don't think anybody but nerds like you and I pay attention to the committee, to the committee meetings. But, you know, I, but I think it's, I think it's a good thing because it shows that the party's not this monolithic thought process. You know, it's, it's always been said that the Republican Party was the big tent party. And I think you saw it play out that you had Republicans on all sides of these issues. Some happy because they felt like it was right in the right place. A lot that were happy it didn't go far enough. A lot that were happy that thought stuff went too far. You know, so I think at the end of the day, what you saw was compromised legislation where leadership looked at, looked at the caucuses that they had to, that they had to get legislation passed through and said, all right, you know, what, what can we roll as a consensus piece of legislation here? That would also have public buy-in. Because, you know, we are talking about a pandemic here. So you've also got to enact legislation that's going to have public buy-in because at the end, at the end of the day, unless the public is, you know, going along with this stuff, getting, and getting vaccinated, you know, wearing masks when asked to, and all the other things that are, that are expected of us to be kind of good citizens of the world at this, you know, at this point in history. You know, the public's opinion is important too. And so I think leadership did a good job of finding a sweet spot among the caucus and, you know, also trying to figure out where the public tolerance is.
You mentioned the news and headlines. Sticking with the special session theme and specifically over masks, you saw some, some news articles only sort of referencing masking and Republicans as anti-maskers. You and I talked about this recently off camera. What's your takeaway on that? I mean, is that the Republican agenda to do away with masks?
You know, the media is very, is being very insincere with Republican cases for a lot of stuff. You know, I got mad. There's a New York Times article, I think on Monday maybe, and actually she tweeted at the writer, not that it would do any good, but with, with a similar issue where she was saying that Republicans in states that require other vaccines are protesting against this federal vaccine mandate. The issue is, as we have done throughout the process, Republicans' problem has always, has never been with what needs to be done for public health. What needs to be done for the public good? It's the process. Because process, at the end of the day, matters. Because that's the only thing that, that process protects us from despotism. And so, you know, process is important. And a lot of Republicans felt like the mask mandate at a statewide level was trying to kill a fly with, with a hammer. And that, you know, we can do this more strategically. We can do it better with people who are local and who are on the ground or seeing the numbers. Because, you know, when you see the state numbers, they lag the local numbers by a couple of days. So the people who are local are going to be getting better information from the local health department. You know, so they, they can make decisions better, be more nimble. And, you know, that's what Republicans didn't want mask mandates to go away. And I think when you look, we're up to about 80% plus of school districts have instituted mask mandates at a local level, which is the way it should have always worked and it's the way it's working now.
So I think here's the problem. One, you've got maybe disingenuous reporters or perhaps editors who are trying to simplify something.
Also, don't forget, they're, they're in business. They're, they're trying to sell papers. And everybody got together and had a good meeting and agreed on stuff, doesn't sell, doesn't sell papers, doesn't get clicks. They need that sensational headline.
And of course, and on top of that, here's what's different, right? What's, what is news, right? Like, car goes down the street every day. I'm not going to report that there's a car going down the street.
Yeah.
Car wrecks into the building, all of a sudden, that's news because it doesn't happen every day, right? It's the Jack Brammer. I did a thing with him years ago and talking to some college kids and he said, look, airplanes, they land every day. I'm not going to go out and report on that.
I called, I called a TV station one time trying to pitch my story for a client. And they said, listen, I gotta be honest with you. Unless there's a fire or a corpse, we're not coming.
Wow. And, you know, there's, there is something wrong there on the, on the local side for, for that perspective, right? But, you know, beyond that, we know, we know sort of the why, right? And why papers report the way they do. And also that it's not always the reporter, sometimes it's an editor that oversimplifies.
Sometimes, sometimes it's just, it's literally just a copy editor, whoever's putting the headline on.
Truly, truly. So many reporters don't even write their own, write their own headlines. But, you know, sort of beyond that, I think when you talk specifically about Republicans and masking, it becomes complicated because not all Republicans believe the same thing, even though Republicans took large action in that direction.
I think there are some that, yes, there are some that, that are outside of mainstream. And when you look, when you look, and this, this is something I've cautioned all Republicans on, any candidate that I've talked to, elected officials, potential candidates is, this stuff polls really well. With, with the lone exception of the masking of two to five year olds, the mask mandates poll extremely well. Vaccine mandates poll fairly well, depending on, they poll better on, from coming from the state than they do on a federal level. They poll even better from, from allowing employers to mandate. You know, this stuff, you hear a lot about it and you hear a lot of complaining and groaning on social media and in the press. But at the end of the day, again, like we talked about, the press is, that to get clicks, they have, they have to portray the far, the far wing positions, the far left and the far right. And the fact is, the middle, like 70, 75% of the country understands the pandemic, understands what needs to be done. So the vast majority of Republicans support masks. And there certainly are some that don't for a variety of reasons. But I think by and large, if you're going to talk Republican Party as a, as a body, you know, you have, you have to talk majority opinion. And majority opinion is going to be, we had a problem with, with process, not policy. And we fixed that during session.
Yeah. So got two essential trains of thought going on. Journalism strain and also a masking conversation and a COVID conversation and.
Well, there's the sad part though, Nick, is they, they unnecessarily have become combined. Because the media drives the conversation so much. So many people get their news through that, through that prism of, of, of the press, whichever, whatever media you want to call it and follow, whether it's online, print, TV, whatever. You know, that you, you almost can't separate the two because it's, they're not always portrayed the same and there's different. It's, it's such a mess trying to figure out where, where, where the truth lies.
Well, I want to come back to the COVID conversation. So you pushed us towards the journalism conversation here. And like, look, journalism, journalism has a problem, right? And the, and the problem is, in the early days of the internet, journalism online is given away for free.
Yes.
And then Facebook came along. As advertisers figured out, you could spend money with local websites. And Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, et cetera, you can now buy every news station by just buying one of the social media components. And, you know, picking up on the shares of, of information that way. And so, you know, take it on to a, a more broad scale, the national news media has figured out that if you pick a side and you deliver news to either side, you can own market share and people really want to reinforce what it is that they believe. I think you get less of that at the local level.
I do think local is better, but the problem is, is that local, you know, I, I always get onto people that you know the president, you probably know the vice president, 75, 80% chance, you know, both your senators, probably about the same chance to know your governor. Do you know who your city council person is? Do you know who you're married? No. And it's the same thing with media is they pay attention to the shiny lights. And, you know, I, I think, Nick, I don't know, people talk about this partisan divide in the country. And I don't know that we're ever going to be able to move on and reunite the country until the press. And I'm specifically talking about your national print media, like the Washington Post, New York Times, LA Times, those ones. And then your, especially your, your TV media, until they own up to and accept their culpability in the creation of Trump. Man, Trump, Trump didn't, he almost didn't spend a dime the first, you know, through, through Super Tuesday because he got, he was great for ratings. So every MSNBC, CNN, Fox, they all wanted him on because he was great for ratings. They helped create this beast. And then they further sensationalized it because it's great for ratings. And they figured it's also great for ratings when you have on far left yelling at far right. You know, having on somebody who's center right versus center left, having a substantive policy conversation, that didn't, that didn't get clicks.
No.
And so until, until the press owns up to and accepts culpability, which they, they tooth and nail are fighting the acceptance of that. And I talk to people in local, in local press all the time. You know, people, people remember me from my time at RPK and think, you know, you know, what they don't know, and you know, and what any reporter will say, they'll tell you is, I was always the most open, accessible and, and would, would be the most frank and honest with people behind the scenes, off the record. And, you know, I talk to my friends that are still in the press, especially in print, and they're, they're as fed up with it as I am. And they don't, you know, because it affects their work at the local level.
Sure.
Because if they, if they write something that is honest and truthful, but it happens to beat up on one side, all of a sudden, people go nuts and they're biased. And no, they're just, they follow the story. But we live in this prism where all media is biased because all media, when people refer to that, is, is the national level. It's just, it's, it's, it's causing terror for the local people. And also just, we cannot move past that partisan divide until the national media accepts their culpability and everything in the, in the divide that's, that exists in the country right now.
Sure. But, and I agree. I think that, I think you're spot on. I think the national media created Trump when they were probably majority of them trying to kill his presidency.
They've also created AOC. They've created Madison Cawthorn and Marjorie Greene Taylor and Ilhan Omar. I mean, it's, it's not a partisan thing. It's, it's for them, it's about, it's about money because those, the sensational personalities equal cash to those outlets.
And also this is the point I want to make is that these are corporations at the end of the day. These are for-profit entities. And, you know, I don't think anybody's arguing to socialize media or government run media. But, you know, as long as there's corporate interests involved, you're going to have, you know, people trying to make a buck. And, and as such, it's going to be whatever gets us, what the majority wants to see or is maybe the most divisive, that gets the most people to come and complain about whatever it is. And that's not going to stop. And, and I, so I guess the, the challenge that I have is, and for, not just for you, but for everybody, how do we incentivize journalism that is, that we want to see? I mean, I could sit down right now and I can write a very process oriented story. I could tell you what's going on in any number of things. And I might get a couple hundred clicks. And I could turn around and I could write something about somebody and it might be a good government piece. And tell you what, it's going to reinforce somebody's belief system. And I'll get a couple thousand clicks.
Well, I mean, I think the problem is, there, there's two problems. One, again, the, the press refuses to admit any culpability. And so that's problem one. They gotta, they gotta, the national media hasn't accepted that. But problem two is, we have to look at ourselves because, you know, when, when, when we run a campaign, people always complain about negative ads. There's a reason we run negative ads. We, you know, when you're working on limited funds with, in a campaign and you're, we're not in the business of wasting money on fruitless efforts.
Right.
We've poll tested this stuff. We know what will move votes. And you know what moves votes? Negative ads. If, you know, people react to it. It's, it's, it's become ingrained in our human nature to react to the negative and to react to sensational. And so, you know, the press can do, the press can go a long way by cleaning up their act. But at the end of the day, we as humans and as Americans have to be willing to tone ourselves down and to listen to more moderated discourse. And I, you know, I don't, I don't, I have no idea how you do that one. But, you know, that's, I mean, some, some, somebody has to click on that in order for it to be, to be incentivized, which means that like, you know.
So we need a culture shift.
Yeah.
Essentially.
But, I mean.
That's, that's tough to create.
Good luck figuring that one out, right?
All right. So at least until culture changes and we don't, you know, we aren't so reactionary.
Just replace the fluoride in the water with bourbon. It'll simmer everybody down a little bit.
So here, like one last point on this, and this was eye opening for me pretty early on. I was covering the, you know, you have a sense of what the nationals are doing and whatnot. And I won't, I won't give away reporter names or anything like that. But in 2014, the US Senate race against Allison Larrigan Grimes and Senator Mitch McConnell was the race, that election year. It was essentially a presidential level contest happening in Kentucky.
Manny Raj is a nationwide name now. He covered his teeth covering that race, went straight to the DC.
Exactly. So.
Well, by the way, where are you, why, why aren't, I mean, Manny is up in DC. What the hell's wrong with you, Nick?
Well, we can't all be Manny Raj. I'll tell you what, I, I'm very happy. Let me go to the national side. I'll say that now confidently. That's not the place that I want to be at. I love being in Kentucky.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we had all these national reporters, Manny Raju, we had, you know, coming from Politico at the time, we had all these other reporters. And what was interesting to see was these reporters had picked a candidate. And so you had some pick Grimes, you had some, and I'm talking national, not, not local. You had some pick Grimes and you had some pick McConnell. And, you know, the McConnell reporters got fed McConnell stories from McConnell staff, you know, the Grimes people fed Grimes, you know, crime stories to, to their other reporters. But the play was, and careers were made and, and, and lost on that election. Because by picking your candidate, you also then, when those people went back to DC,
Yep.
had a built in network. And so, you know, people that picked McConnell leveled up in, in the journalism side of things. And it was really interesting to see that game play out up close and just how shaded the reporting was. In the, you know, at the same time that we were told all of this was objectivity. And so, you know, for, for a lot of national reporters that want to move up in the ranks, there's a way to do it. It just isn't what's great for democracy.
Well, and I think, you know, you've got, there's been loads of articles written on the kind of the current newsroom at the New York Times where you've got this, like, well, these kids come out of journalism school who are, who are much more activist in belief that, you know, believe, they've got a voice and they've got to not just report fact, but use their voice versus reporters who are going to report. And, you know, I don't, and we have some, I won't name names, but we, we have some activist journalists here in Kentucky that, you know, they're, they're fine reporters when they're working on something that's not in their activism wheelhouse. But when they're active, then they're in their activism wheelhouse, it's hard to deal with them because they're, they're not, they're not going to give you a fair cut. You know, I always liked working with people like, like you. I love working with Tom Loftus. You know, Tom, Tom would call me literally once a week to say, hey, what's, what's going on? And I knew I wouldn't, I wasn't going to get, you know, any favorable coverage out of him, but I was going to get fair coverage. You know, Deb Yetter, the one I always point to people on is, I used to work with the payday lending people back before I went back into campaigns. You know, Deb was very anti-payday until I, I worked with her for a long time and explained that, you know, there's no, not necessarily any saints on any side of this issue. And, you know, she was, she was, she was able to work with me in a very fair, even manner. I mean, it's, it's possible to do, but you've got a lot of younger journalists these days that believe they've, they've got a voice and a forum.
Yeah.
And they've got to use it for, for, for good, in their definition of good.
Sure. Well, and, you know, at the end of the day, Trey, people are people are people, right? I mean, like, look, we can sit here and talk about how, oh, I've never had a closely held belief in my life. And it's just not true.
Yeah.
It's just not true. But here's the difference in a professional versus somebody else is to say, I recognize I have this belief, but how do I replace it with objectivity? How do I step back from that and, and have the ability within myself to say, okay, what are the sides, all the sides of this story, regardless of what I believe? And how do I fairly portray that? And I think, you know, I think there are people that are, are doing a good job at it.
And look, and I think you can, you can, your beliefs can help shape what you write about, but you've got to try to not let it shape how you write about them, I think.
Yeah. I think absolutely. Sure. And, you know, the, I have this conversation with different reporters. I mean, I think that you need a little bit of, not necessarily a core belief, but you need a little bit of like, you know, at least for me, I use sort of like a, an internal gut check of, you know, if something just sits with me in, in a weird way of like, this just doesn't feel right. This doesn't, you know what I mean? That's, that's an inclination for me to, to dig deeper. And what I might very well find is that, you know, there's nothing there. I can't tell you how many investigations I've done, how many stories that I had started that turned out not to be what I thought it was at the beginning. I can also tell you, the majority of time when there's smoke, there's fire. So, you know, I kind of use that thing to, to move me into the fact finding state. But you still have to find your facts.
I've said for years, I'd rather have an elected official who, who is moral than someone who attempts to govern with their morals. You know, I'd rather have somebody who, who is gonna, who's gonna vote for something that's against their personal morals, but they know it's the right thing to do for, for whatever body it is that they're, that they're representing in. And I, you know, I want to know that it's going to keep them up at night.
Right.
But, but, but also, also want to know that they're going to do, that they're willing to put their own moral compass aside and understand that despite my personal qualms, this is the right vote to take on this, on this issue, the right action to take on this issue. Like, you know, so I think morals are important, but you, you can't let them, you can't let them control you.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. So I want to pivot back now to COVID measures. And, you know, really to understand special session, we've got to back up a little bit and go back to the regular session of 2021 when Republicans, the super majorities in the House and Senate passed legislation to effectively say that we didn't intend for emergency orders coming from the governor to last 18 months. When legislature first gave the governor emergency powers decades ago, it was intended to be what we thought emergency at the time would be, which would be, you know, 15 days, 30 days. We can, you know, reasonable minds can differ on how long an emergency lasts. But the legislature decided they wanted to come back and say that, like, look, anything past 30 days, you can, you can issue emergency orders for 30 days, but anything past that is a legislative prerogative. And in the case of COVID, pandemic that we're now in the 18th month of, that should have a check and a balance from the legislature. But the question, Trey, is that a lot of these things aren't motivated by what's best for people. It's motivated by being reelected or, or electing more of one party over another. Did Republicans bite off more than they could chew by taking on a pandemic that doesn't have an easy answer to, to solve, or at least not a politically, a politically good one. I think there is an easy answer, but it's not a politically.
I don't think so because, you know, at the end of the day, the changes that they made during the regular session, you know, I always remind people that there was only seven states. Now you have like 28 states that have year round legislatures. So that they have, they, they can deal with it regardless. Of the remaining states, there was only seven that didn't have a legislative check and balance on emergency powers. So by us instituting legislative check on it, we, we weren't like, it gets portrayed in the media and Andy Beshear makes it seem like we're somehow like wandering off in a, in a wilderness by ourselves. No, we, we joined the mainstream. We, we joined the majority of states in having a legislative check over executive branch emergency powers. So regardless of, you know, sometimes it takes an emergency to, to expose flaws in your, in your, in your system. And I think this was a flaw in our system. I'd say the same thing if it was a Republican governor and Democrat legislature. It was a flaw in our system. It needed to be changed. Because at the end of the day, you saw things going on in 2020. And I mean, when I'm getting calls from Democrat local, local elected officials and Democrat members of legislature complaining to me about, I can't get a message through to these guys. They're not listening to me. You, you have a problem. And so, you know, I, I think that, you know, Andy Beshear could have avoided a lot of this if he had opened the doors more and been more collaborative. But at the end of the day, the Republican Party needed to do what, what the majority of the public wanted, which was, we don't think that one man should have all of this power and be able to institute all this stuff with very little, very limited input from people with boots on the ground. And, you know, I think that it wasn't easy for Andy Beshear. And nobody should expect it's going to be easy for, for, for the, for the legislature either. But it's the right thing to do. It's, it's good government.
Yeah. I unintentionally spouted Kanye West lyrics. I just want to point that out. No man should have all that power. Look though, and we're already seeing the political side of this coming back where Beshear now, before even these laws are actually enacted, saying, you know, child, you know, kids getting, getting COVID, the death rate, Republicans own this, right?
Well, I, I think Democrats have been, quite frankly, incredibly hateful and unnecessarily vicious and, and frankly, just hurting as much as they want to bitch complain about Republicans, you know, being partisan and creating this divide. It's up there literally saying Republicans want, want to see schoolchildren die, which is, which is just, it's sick. Mary Lou Marzie on the floor, she had some very sick and disgusting floor speeches, perverted floor speeches. Like how you would, how, how you could get up there and talk about your fellow members of legislature, who you serve with, and, and assign to them the motives that she was assigning. It's just, it's perverted. It's, it's like, you want to know why we've gotten where we've gotten? It's people like that talking, saying things like that in a public setting in, in a position of authority. So, you know, I think that that's incredibly wrong, but there were, I mean, they're, they're hearing from their constituents. They're up there representing the people that they were elected to represent. And, you know, I talked to a lot of, a lot of legislature on a pretty, you know, frequent basis. And they, they were doing what they were set up there to do by the people that vote for them. This is not some sort of outside the mainstream, they're, they're, you know, they're going cowboy up there, gone rogue. This is what the people they voted for were, were asking for. At the end of the day, unless you had the consent of the governed, you know, they're, they're not going to do. And that's, I, I think that gets back to a lot of the problems early on is that people, people were told early on, we will defeat COVID if we do this, that, and the other. And that's, I, I think that gets back to a lot of the problems early on is that people, people were told early on, we will defeat COVID if we do this, that, and the other. Two things there. First of all, we're never going to defeat COVID. It's a coronavirus. How are we doing defeating the common cold? That's a coronavirus too. You know, we, we can, prevention and, uh, and, and maintenance and dealing with it when it pop, that, that's, that's all we can, that's all we can do.
Yeah.
At least for the time being. Now vaccines can change the conversation a little bit, but we're, we're not, we're not going to defeat it because it's a coronavirus. It's not polio. It's not smallpox. But, you know, people, people believed that early on and they got understandably angry when that didn't happen. And they became less compliant with orders. So unless you had the consent of the governed here, you can pass whatever law you want. If they're not, if they're not going to do it, are you going to start just mass arrests because of, because they're not wearing masks or not getting vaccinated? So, you know, having a legislature do what the people are asking them in this situation, they, they know what the breaking point for their constituents is. And, you know, we, we need that right now.
Here's what I think is interesting in all of this. Now you, you, you got at it in your comments. I think that, um, masks are at least non-medical grade masks are largely ineffective. And, you know, some prevention is better than, than, and I'm not saying don't wear a mask. So don't, you know, don't get that confused. But the conversation here, if we want to really protect Kentuckians is vaccine conversation. And it seems to be lost in the, in the shuffle here. I mean, uh, newspapers are, are way too happy to talk about masks here and masks there. And, you know, like, uh, personal freedoms and, okay, the, great, awesome. But what about the thing that's going to protect a majority of us at the end of the day is going to be inoculated against a virus, the same way you protect people with the flu vaccine.
And, and, and the people who are lagging in vaccination in this state are largely white rural conservatives. They ain't going to listen to Andy Beshear one way or the other. At some point in time, that conversation was going to have to get handed over to Republican leaders anyways.
Right.
And the fact that Beshear had to have that rested from his hands, but he was doing nothing with it. He was not, you know, Andy Beshear was, his only outreach to those communities was to shame them daily in a, in a press conference.
And that's not going to work.
No, that's not going to work. So, you know, he long ago should have had a conversation with Republican leaders and said, and, and engaged them on a larger level, given them more responsibility, brought them into the conversation and tried to figure out programs that would work to target these people, but he didn't. And honestly, I think it's because early on, I think what happens early on, and I'm talking like March or so last year, when the, when the first shutdowns happened. When we thought, you know, two weeks to flatten the curve and all that. I think the Beshear people made a calculated political decision that if we do this perfectly, we own it, it goes great. That's our, that's our path to reelection.
Yeah. I don't think you're wrong.
Then you get further down a road where you still get this mindset, but you're, you know, you're all in on it. And it's hard to pull, it's hard to pull back out because that's, that's your, that's your strategy. And I think that's what prevented them from, from opening the door and allowing these other people in. And I think he let it get worse because he didn't want to collaborate people because then he'd have to share credit, uh, upon success.
Sure. Like, look, we're a very Republican state. Uh, Andy Beshear is governor because of how unelectable Matt Bevin was, right?
Accurate.
Exactly. And, you know, he can take four years and he can find a core issue and he can save some lives and he can do a whole lot of good. And, and get reelected on the basis of saving life and being a leader ala, uh, George W. Bush, right? We can have this argument now, you know, 20 years later, like what he did. But, uh, you know, he can be essentially a wartime governor, right? In a, in a pandemic, if he leads us through this crises and we all come out.
But even Bush brought Democrats in the conversation.
Exactly. I'm like, look, he was wrong. Andy Beshear should have been standing up there with Republicans. He could have done both. He didn't. And we are where we're, we're at today. But, but to me, even if Beshear owns all of that, it's not stopping anybody else, uh, from stepping forward and saying, go get vaccinated. Don't listen to the governor. Don't listen to, to me. Don't listen to whomever. I think it's when people get, you know, in that kind of crouched up position and really dug in, and somebody tries to tell them why they're wrong, they're only going to get more dug in.
No, I think, I think that's part of it. And, and you see, you see Leader McConnell getting aggressive, uh, using, using campaign cash to run ads. Um, I think the legislature though is, you know, they're hamstrung by resources. There's, you know, they can write an op ed for the local paper. That's about the extent of what they can do unless they're being empowered by a larger entity. Uh, most likely the, the state of Kentucky and the executive branch to, to supply them with a megaphone to transmit a message that would help.
We've got COVID funds.
Yeah.
We've got COVID funds, but let's be honest.
That's what we're doing now. The legislature, that was a lot of what they did. Some of those bills was to, was to spend money on, on PR efforts.
Here's the thing though, I, I'm going to be frank with you. And this is me putting my opinion hat on less than a reporter hat. I don't think it's going to do anything.
I don't think, I don't think, well, I think you have a bulk of people. And, and, and remember, you know, the RNC just had a video out the other day that I thought was, was striking that, that started as a reminder of the skepticism from Kamala Harris, Joe Biden, Andrew Cuomo, other major Democrats saying, I'm not going to, you shouldn't trust this Trump vaccine. I wouldn't take that thing. And then the minute they get into office, it's go get vaccinated. So the message has been, the vaccine itself has been diluted so much through politics that you've got people who, they just, I, I don't, I don't know that there's anything you can do to convince them. I do think that there's, I, you know, the, the Biden mandate, vaccine mandate is just wrong. It's, it's not, it's not going to hold up in court. It's not going to be legal. You know, people point to, to older court cases, especially during smallpox, uh, and other pandemics. Those, those were all based on state laws. I, I do think that what's going to end up changing, and I think you and I had this discussion off air. Uh, and, and you saw Delta is the first airline, the first company I've seen do it. Delta put a $200 a month surcharge on your health insurance if you're an employee and you're not vaccinated. They had, uh, almost 9,000 employees get vaccinated in that first month. And what's going to happen is going to come to the insurance companies. The insurance companies are going to treat COVID the same way they treat smoking. Where if your group policy from your employer, if you have over 10% of your group members are unvaccinated, they're going to stick a surcharge on your, on your policy and your employer is going to say, I'm not paying that.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to pass the, the fee, the increased rate along to people who've done the right thing. So you 10% who are unvacc, you know, 15, whatever percent that are unvaccinated, either get vaccinated or get out the door because we're not, not, nobody else is going to be punished financially for your poor decision to make. Because I think it's the insurance companies that eventually will end up having the biggest stick to swing on it and that'll, that'll make the biggest change.
Which is interesting. There's a free market essentially speaking and saying that, you know, we want to incentivize, uh, you know, I might spend, spend more of my dollars with Delta to fly a Delta and know that every time I get on a Delta flight, I'm going to be more.
What I'm, I'm even thinking it's going to be that. I think it's going to be more from the employers because the employer's dealing with two things. One, it's an average for, for the initial hospital stay. If you're hospitalized with COVID, it's anywhere from a 50 to $70,000 bill.
Sure.
And then we don't even know the long-term health ramifications. So you could be talking, you know, another $50,000 every year for the rest of your life. We don't know. But you, and then you also have the loss of productivity for an employer when your employee who did not take an easy step, which is to get a shot in their arm, uh, is now going to lose 10, 15, 20, 30 days of productivity because of, of a personal decision they made. If I'm an employer, uh, you know, why do I, why do I want to keep that person on the payroll when I can go hire somebody who, who didn't make that choice, who can do that job? Uh, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to suffer, uh, an increase in my insurance rates and I'm not going to suffer that loss of productivity. I think, you know, from a free market standpoint, it's going to, going to be from the employer standpoint that, that's going to, that's going to force the vaccination issue.
And that makes sense. And I think we'll capture, focus that way if other, you know, other insurance companies, other employers take suit. Uh, however, Trey, I, you know, we are in a different time, right? Like we have this conversation every now and again about like, I would get asked occasionally like, what does this mean? Is this a survivable moment for this person? Blah, blah, blah. I don't know. Trump got elected. Right? Like, uh, did, he, he survived every unsurvivable moment in modern political history. He should not have won that election based on everything that happened. He did though. And so we're in this phase, at least, uh, those of us that, that watch these things closely of like, what, what matters now? Right? And I think on that, on that point, can you convince someone who's been through, and let's face it, like for, for a lot of people, COVID and being trapped in their homes and like a lot of people just didn't even leave their homes. Uh, and, you know, even until the lockdowns ended, we're in a state of mental health crises. And for those people that now are untrusting of government or untrusting of, you know, we have the Q movement. We had an insurrection against the, and we had people storm the, the United States Capitol.
This weekend, we have no idea what's going to happen.
Right. So all these things are, are going on. Can we really talk sense? And it's certainly not going to be saying, well, you idiot, you need to go do this, but can we ever have this discussion, even if it's mandated by, we're not even a mandate. Even if it's, you know, uh, like smoking, you're going to cost, you're going to pay more in, uh, health insurance. You know, are we ever going to be able to get around that?
Yes. Some, some of these people, I, I mean, and I, I wonder half jokingly, but half serious, if you, you don't need to attempt to fight misinformation with misinformation. And just tell some of these people, hey, no, this is a huge Democrat plot to win elections. Their hope is to kill off Republican voters. So stop those Democrats and get the vaccine.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I, I just, I don't know what story you sell to some of these people to get it done. I just.
But we don't even need to go to a fake news piece, right? Like, well, what do we know? We know that the Chinese and the Russians have incentive to see us fight one another in the United States. We know that they've seeded misinformation since the 1990s about vaccines, not COVID vaccines, vaccines writ large.
Yeah.
Uh, are propaganda campaigns that originated in foreign nations to ensure that, you know, America wasn't a cohesive unit and that our populace was suffering so that, you know, they, they can take advantage of, of, uh, basically our, our greatest, our, you know, like, uh, compare us to China, right? What do we have that China doesn't have? We've got freedom of information. But that's also a great portal in to spread misinformation and have us out there in the streets yelling at one another, uh, versus China, which can just say, well, there is, there's only one stream of information. It's the.
All is well. Everything is good.
Exactly.
Baghdad Bob.
Exactly. They don't have the, but they don't have the problems that we have right now. Right? So, uh.
Well, that we know of because it can't, can't be reported because of lack of information.
That's, that's true. That is true. But you're not going to have people out in the streets yelling at each other about whether or not they should wear a mask or whether or not they should get a vaccine.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't have an answer, man. Like it's, you know, we're, we're a divided public and we've had a collapse in trust of institutions at all levels, from both parties. You know, Democrats trust government about as much as Republicans trust government. You know, it's, it, and it's not just government institutions. It's like a trust in the media, like a trust in, in, in medicine and doctors and hospitals. It's like, you know, it's, it's like a trust in institutions in general, the, I, the concept of institutions. So.
That's interesting.
You know, I, 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 I was interviewed by a reporter about a month or so ago, uh, as that's, that's, this is the most divided time that we in America. So, so, you know, we're not actively at war with each other. So probably not.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think that the biggest issue now between other times of division is, is like you said, both availability of information, but also the way that that information, especially data is collected and can be manipulated. You know, we know in campaigns, uh, we can target specific zip codes. We can target, uh, IP, we can target down to IP addresses. I can make sure wherever Nick Storm goes in the world, he's going to get the ad that I want to see because I'm buying his IP address. And, uh, you know, so the way that information is delivered to us even is lends itself towards division and towards whatever message that is. And, and frankly, uh, there's, there's money to be made in some people's eyes in, in dissolving trust in institutions. And that's kind of where, where we've wound up at. But, you know, I'll, I'll say this, Nick, we're not going to solve this menial scenario of bourbon. So let's, let's, I know you've got some political stuff on the, on the docket here.
I mean, I hope spring's eternal. You know, you, you just keep drinking and maybe we'll get there, at least for ourselves. And maybe, maybe the solution is just unplug entirely.
I'm, I mean, I'm on Zillow every day looking for cabins in the woods.
I like it. All right. Um, I do want to talk to you about.
I got a manifesto, right?
I want to talk to you about elected, uh, our elections coming up. We've got three special elections. Uh, Trey, what are you watching for in these elections?
Um, probably just percentages would be the only thing. Cause I think Republicans will, will win all of them pretty handily, just based on where they're at.
These are all Republican, uh, districts. Uh, we got two deaths, uh, unfortunately, Representative Bam Carney, Senator Tom Buford.
And, and one, one seat that thankfully is not due to a death, but is due to stupidity, which could have caused a death.
Yes. So the, uh, not yet settled court case of former Representative Robert Goforth.
Uh, but, you know, all three of those, I think the Goforth district is like, it's like, I think it was like 84% Trump, something insane like that.
Yeah.
Might even been higher. Uh, the Bam.
Heavily, heavily.
The Bam Carney district, provided bet is probably about 70% Trump or so. And, and.
So that's Taylor and Adair County.
Yeah. And Jessamine County is the, the state senate district, the former Senator Buford, uh, is going to be, I think it might have one or two precincts in Fayette, but it's, it's all of Jessamine, um, what Washington, Boyle and Garrett. Uh, and that, that should go Republicans. I mean, I don't think there's much of a shot of Democrats winning either of those three seats. So if you want to look for anything, it, it might be margins. Um, but, you know.
So here's, here's what is interesting, uh, and, and you being, uh, on the consulting side of politics and on the RPK side of things. Uh, I, it'd be great to see some message testing here, but the messages don't matter in special elections because there's such a truncated, uh, form of election.
It's all about turning.
It's all about get out the vote. Um, so can you take away, you're saying you're looking at percentages, but why are you looking at percentages? Break that, break that down.
Enthusiasm. See, you know, cause there's, there's an opportunity cost to, to get, to get out the vote, uh, uh, programs, you know? It's the, you know, we, we look at, at voter rolls and you look at four out of four voters, three out of four voters, two out of four voters, one out of four voters. We typically look at, you know, presidential election cycle. And so there, there's an increased, uh, price tag. Every time you drop down from a four out of four to three out of four, every time you drop down one lost vote, it's, it's, it's money to turn that voter out.
Right.
So the question is, you know, uh, that can be overcome with natural enthusiasm. So are voters enthusiastic about getting out to vote? Uh, which parties of voters are enthusiastic to vote? Because those are the ones that will be more easily turned out. And especially with three special elections going on where you get to split the money up.
Right.
Um, you know, but I also don't know, I mean, I don't know where, where, how hard or how the Democrat party is going to play in these three elections because they are an unwinnable district. So if I'm a Democrat donor, I, I'm like, why are you spending money in this Jackson County seat? We ain't go, we ain't going to win it. We've got real serious elections coming up, uh, next year, especially with, we don't know what redistricting is going to, is going to cause, what chaos that might, that might bring. So like, if I'm a Democrat, I'm asking myself seriously, the Jessamine County seat, maybe because you're in the, you're in the Lexington media market, uh, you know, right? You're in Lexington. You could, you could.
You've got, you've got that split with Madison, partial Madison County.
Yeah. You could, you could do some messaging on that that, that might serve a broader purpose. The other two seats, it's, what, what's your ROI on that? Like, I don't know why the Democrats would invest money in it other than there's an election we have to. But if I'm a donor, I'm saying, put some money in Jessamine County seat, leave the other ones alone.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Which, which, which then throws into question, what, do the, the percentages matter at all if one side's not playing?
Probably not. Probably not. But, um, there's, I mean, they're fascinating to watch. It's.
Now the, the Bam Carney seat may have some interest because of the independent in there. So you might, you might want to say like, what is that? How much play does he get? And?
And he's investing heavily. You know, he's already got billboards up in both counties. You've already got, uh, radio ads for him. He didn't even lag in the, the wait to, to start putting things up. I think there's probably an open question here of whether or not he, uh, he wanted to be the Republican nominee and didn't get the nomination or got irritated before the nominating process and switched parties. So, and he might be vulnerable, but, you know, at the end of the day, maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's a storyline to watch is it, as we sort of message test, uh, Trumpism, uh, against establishment, uh, you know, races. Uh, the Buford seat I think will be interesting too. You sort of, you do have that geographic split. Um, uh, it's not enough geography, I don't think, to overcome the, the, you know, the voting patterns. But I mean, let's not forget that, um, this is off cycle, right? Like who's going to actually show up and vote? And are people going to even know that there's an election happening in their backyard and get themselves to the polls on November 2nd?
Well, I, I think, you know, A, Republicans have the vast advantage on resources to make that, to get that message out. But B, I, I think that that district, you know.
Do they care?
Yeah.
There's a ton of Republicans in office right now, Trey.
I, I can tell you, the people, the people in the state senate are very competitive and they don't want to lose a seat. They will, they will invest to make sure that that doesn't happen. So.
Fair enough. There's what? 30 Repub-, well, previous to Buford's passing, there were 30, uh, Republicans I think in eight.
30 or something like that. I don't, I thought it was 29, but I.
Well, I think it's 29 now.
Okay. Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
Buford's passing. Um, so I don't think, I think there's only eight.
Ah, you get so many, you lose track. It's.
It is true. It's like, it's like kids.
I mean, I know you, you got that problem. You've done a lot of national conventions, you know?
Get out of here. No. Um.
Kevin Wheatley.
So the, I have him on at some time. I'll put you on, feed you guys questions. Um, so. I'm telling you what, it's, it's a good thing I've not had more bourbon right now. I've actually followed this conversation. Remind myself, I'll release all of this. So, um, geez, Trey, uh, open, open seats. The, the, the other thing I think is interesting coming up in 2022 is that we're going to have all of the House seats up for reelection will have even numbered. And then out of the, some of these seats, we're going to have quite a few open seat elections as we likely go through redistricting. So it's setting up a lot of sort of fascinating storylines, uh, obviously. Obviously, lawmakers are gonna have to return next year and pass a budget. They're gonna have to pass new legislative maps, cause I don't think they're coming back to pass.
And, and you know, and I think that's a serious political mistake on Andy Beshear's part. He has something that, that, that the Republicans legislature want, which is a special session to pass legislative maps so that, A, uh, they don't have to move the filing deadline back. Cause the filing deadline's early January now. So they're, they're, they're gonna have to pass legislation to move the filing deadline back because you can't file for a map that you, that you don't know what the map is. Cause you may not even live in the district you filed in. So they're gonna have to move the filing deadline back. It costs Andy Beshear nothing. Anything that he tries to do, anything he tries to veto is gonna get overridden. So it literally costs him nothing. And he could maybe extract a trade or a promise or, or some nicety out of the legislature in exchange for calling that special session. So it, it boggles my mind and shows that Andy Beshear's got nobody giving him good political advice, that he wouldn't try to work a deal to, to call a special session for the, for the, for the map.
Maybe he watches this and he's gonna.
Yeah, there you go.
There's plenty of time. I don't think Republicans have maps ready yet, right?
No, I know that they're.
At the end of the year.
I know they're working on them, I mean, they just got the numbers less than on the, I think, I think the number's on August 18th, the last month.
Right, we knew, we knew the big broad changes, we didn't know the precinct level changes.
Yeah.
And so, you have to start inputting that precinct.
And just to remind you, they've, now, congressionally, they have to be one-to-one. Every district has to be exactly the same.
Yeah.
Uh, but legislatively, you've got a plus minus of a five vote differential from whatever number the ideal district is. Five percent.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's, they have room to play. I, I would bet that there's at least a pretty rough idea of what they wanna do. You know, there's a couple of, the state senate's gotten a little bit of help because there's been some, some retirements, which allows them to, cause I mean, you know, every time you move something, it's.
You have to adjust something.
Yeah, something else adjusts, so.
So you've got Hornback that's retiring, you've got Senator Wise that's retiring.
No, Senator, Senator Kerr.
Senator Kerr.
You said Wise. And Will Schroder.
Exactly, you've got the open seat, uh, Buford seat that could likely change. So you've got some.
And then CB Embry, you know, CB's health is not great. He's not officially announced, he's not running again, but I, I would.
Yeah, he didn't show up for the session. He, uh, he's not announced, he's not.
No, he, he's, you know, thoughts and prayers with CB Embry, uh, you know, I hope, I hope for recovery, but, you know, that's, I, I would have to assume that would likely become an open seat.
Right, right.
So, you've been, and, and that gives you some geographic balance even on where open seats are, or where you can move, move, move things around and, and maneuver to.
But what's interesting is that, and I'm not at a chance to look at all of the data, but I think rural counties lost.
Oh, by, by large sums. I mean, the, the seats are gonna flow, and they're not gonna be urban seats either. Uh, they're, they're going to be seats that are Louisville seats more anchored in Oldham, Shelby, Spencer counties. It's gonna be Lexington seats more anchored in Jessamine, Scott, and Woodford. Um, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be suburban seats. I think people, uh, I've heard some Democrats think that, you know, they could create some seats maybe that they could, that they might have more of a time to play in.
Yeah.
That's possible, but at the same time, it's gonna be suburban seats where, um, at least pre-Trump, uh, was gonna be fertile ground for, for Republicans. It's gonna be, you know, can you get the right candidate that can run with, uh, that suburban, you know, the message that gets the, the soccer moms back on board?
Yeah.
You know, it's, I, I think that it's gonna create, uh, an opportunity to grow some, to, to write some maps that, that'll, that'll be good for us. Um, and at the same time, you know, I don't think that we have to do what Democrats have had to do the last two map drawings, which is draw, draw seats defensively to protect people. Cause the state's gone so red, um, you know, we're 75 members. I, if you wanted to get really punitive, I could draw you a map that could probably get us up to 80 or 85, but do you want that? No, you can't, you can't control a caucus that big.
Problems controlling the caucus as it is.
So, I mean, you know, hell, I, I, yeah, I hate to, hate to sound, hate to say something that would get me in trouble, but we could even do by shedding a couple, like, cause the caucus is just so big. As long as we're, as long as we're above 70, cause 60 votes is, 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 is super majority. So as long, you know, 70 gives us 10 votes we can lose on any, on any given election. So as long as we're in that sweet spot between where we're at at 75 and 70, you know, we can move the maps around and be magnanimous about it.
So let me ask you this, given what happened during special session, given what's happened in recent legislative sessions, do Republicans in the senate find a new district for Adrian Southworth? And Representative Savannah Maddox and maybe a couple other people over in the House?
I think Savannah Maddox's seat, it's, the House is a lot harder to district somebody out.
It is. There's only so many ways you can craft a senate.
Yeah, um, I mean, there's one other way, which is you just shift the number. And the senate district currently represent ends up in Fulton County.
Yeah.
You know, I, I have, I, I will preface this by saying I have no inside information on any, anything of that nature. And I would seriously doubt that they would do something like that to, to their own caucus.
I don't know, I don't know.
Would I do it if I was drawing the map?
So, but on, but on this point though, Trey, I, so, there's a handful for Republicans, establishment Republicans, that believe a certain set of, uh, policy-based ideas. There's some other people in the Republican Party that are also Republicans, big, big tent party that are sort of been a poison pill in their, in their process, either via redistricting or out and out candidate recruitment. At what point does the Republican Party start to take some action here and decide who Republicans are, or at least Republicans that are in control?
Well, I would say this, I think especially in the House, uh, leadership there has a, has a much stronger belief in the, you get more flies with honey philosophy of leadership. So I, I would definitely in the House not see any appetite among leadership to, to, to get punitive like that and use redistricting as a, as a, as a hammer. Um, the senate, I would also kinda lean the direction, there's, you know, there's been times in the past where I verge, other people verge to send it to get involved in primaries. And, you know, especially President Stivers has always had a hands-off philosophy. Uh, I will say this though, I was at something with Leader McConnell, uh, a month or so ago, and, and somebody asked him about, uh, you know, elections in '22 and, and about the involvement of, of, of senate leadership in primaries. And, and he pointed, he, he said, you know, let me draw your attention to 2010 and remind you of four names. Akin, O'Donnell, uh, Murdoch, and Engel. The one thing those four people have in common is they're not, they're not in the US senate. You know, so I think the, the US senate, Republicans in senate had a wake-up call in 2010 when they got beat by a bunch of these Tea Party people. Um, you know, I, I don't know that, that we're there yet in the, in the state senate level. Um, I know that there's, you know, there's some people out there outside of the caucus that would have an appetite for engaging in, in some stuff like that. You know, I certainly, you know, have an eye on helping where I can to make sure we get people who I'm, I'm more ideologically aligned with. Cause the, the place where you do have these fights isn't primaries.
Sure.
You know, it's not appropriate to me to have these fights in a general election and potentially elect somebody who, I'd rather elect somebody who I'm, I'm gonna agree with 70% of the time than somebody I'm, I'm gonna agree with 20% of the time.
Is that not the point of having a primary?
It is, it is. And, but, you know, like I said, that, you also have to maintain caucus unity. And even if you don't agree with the positions of somebody who might be getting beat up in a primary, uh, you know, you, you always kinda sit back and say, well, what if I get crossways, am I gonna be next? And so there's, you know, there's membership management, uh, concerns there. And both in the senate and the House, they've, they've taken the more hands-off process, uh, 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 with, with nominations.
Of course, this, this process was one pre, what, 2015, right? Like, when, when Republicans for the longest time should have been taking the House and the, you know, taking the House and, and weren't able to get over that.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, the difference in 2016 was recruitment. Now, and I, and I'll 100% give that to Jonathan Schell. Jonathan Schell, for the first time, Republicans stopped recruiting resumes and started recruiting people who would work, you know?
Republicans got beat on filing day.
Yeah.
Republicans didn't get beat at the ballot.
Well, even beyond, even, even in places where we, we believed we had a good candidate. It turned out that candidate, he made, they made it good on paper, but they wouldn't work. They wouldn't knock the doors, they wouldn't make the calls to raise the money. And in 2016, Schell said, you know, I, I'm, throw the resumes out. I'm gonna go out and find somebody who's got, who's got a resume that I can work with. But, I'd take, I'll take the, the small business owner who's gonna bust their hump knocking the doors and making calls over the Chamber of Commerce president who thinks he's gonna like be handed stuff.
Right.
And, and that was the big difference in 16, uh, was, was just purely the type of candidate that they targeted for recruitment. But, you know, I, I think that, uh, you know, the Adrian Southworth primary, that was a, that was a four-way primary. There was a lot of people involved in it. And that nobody really got involved on it. I think the one that they'll be interested to watch is the one in Lexington. Cause I think, you know, you have Andrew Cooper Rider, who's, uh, coffee shop owner who sued the governor and then tried to impeach the governor. And, you know, he's involved with, uh, some, some people that, that run managed outside groups. You know, so I, I do suspect there'll be outside money involved in that one. And there's gonna be a decision force that if, 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 if the main, more mainstream Republicans wanna have a say in it, they're gonna have to, to get involved because the other side's gonna get involved.
I think that's interesting, right? So this is the Alice Forgia-Currie seat, there's three Republicans at this.
And by the way, it's my district, it's, it's where I live.
So, so you've got, uh, what, Amanda Mays-Bledsoe?
Yes.
You've got Cooper Rider, and you've got Ross Mann.
Yeah.
I think all looking at, from, from the Republican side, all saying that they're running for this seat. And then on the Democratic side, um, you've got Paula Sestra Kisek.
Ran last time against Kerr.
Ran last time against Kerr in, I think it was 18?
Yeah.
Uh, and she got within 800 votes of, of Kerr, who was there for decades. So, uh, you know, she's, you know, it'd be interesting to see how that district is, is sort of.
That election is hard to use those numbers. Anything from 18 in Fayette County is gonna become somewhat slanted, cause Amy McGrath spent like $10 million in Fayette County on turnout.
Right.
And that won't, that won't be there, that won't be there this next election.